Under our, being visible with liberty and justice for all.
Onto communication, recognitions, and information this evening with some information regarding the Board of Education.
Yes, just heads up for the upcoming events for the Board of Education, tonight is our July meeting, Thursday, August 10th. We will have a meeting primarily for in last-minute personnel hirings for the start of the school year, and we will probably also have some strategic planning and superintendent goal-setting within that meeting as well. And then our August 24th meeting will be our regularly scheduled August meeting. So that's kind of the month of August there, so that's just an update on that.
Questions on the calendar, calendar bits? All right, on to information regarding the strategic plan, our C-CIP 2023 through 28, focus key pillars, priorities, and discussion of items to be.
Yes, those individuals, if you go through the agenda, you're going to notice some changes from previous agendas, is as we start the first meeting of our new strategic plan here in 2023, effectively, we've kind of changed some of the formats, and we're going to ensure that we have a focus to our strategic plan, referencing that, so even within the meeting today, you'll hear and see different numbers and such that tie to our strategic plan and the Missouri School Improvement Plan, the sixth iteration of that. So that assists us with some of our accreditation, but also put this in the agenda to make it simplify that strategic plan from a thick document to these are the key pillars, priorities, and the goals beneath that are action plans, because we spend a lot of time developing that within the community with a lot of input. We want to ensure that we're adhering to that in our decision-making paradigm and talking about it a lot. So just this part will be in the board packet each meeting.
I wanted to touch on that just a little bit as well. In the public content section this evening, you see a lot of the pillars and some highlighted information regarding those priority areas. Then I wanted to go back in time just a little bit and make mention of our work session on the 17th. We had a great session there, which we covered a lot of conversation topics on, a focus on internal and external communication relative to this new strategic plan, touched on things related to the Early Learning Center, career and technical education, and impairing our graduates with the right education model for graduates where that can connect with them. And then also ensuring that we're making connections with the community at large, so a variety of topics there. And so those kind of things connect directly with the key pillar components that we're seeing there. And as a board, we discussed, we don't want this to be a strategic plan that's left on a shelf. And so with that, I just wanted to kind of reconnect with that conversation, and just as a point of reflection, we've had a couple of weeks to think about it, and open the floor if there is anyone amongst the board that just reflected on that, wanted to add anything to that discussion, or anything additional regarding those key pillars or points of discussion from a few weeks ago. No thoughts? Well, and with that, in closing, this is a topic that we're going to revisit over the next couple of meetings as we go into a new superintendent's goal-setting and evaluation tool, as well as explore some board goal-setting evaluation models as well. So you'll hear about this over the next coming meetings as we go into a fall work session in, I think, early October. So stay tuned, more information to come, and looking forward to launching this strategic plan and getting back to school this academic year. No comments? All right, on to informational item regarding the employee and substitute handbooks for 23, 24.
Yes, just sharing the employee and substitute handbooks for this school year. Ms. Noack has done a great job of assembling these and updating these for the upcoming school year, so you'll be able to reference those. I'll also move those into the library section of the board, so it's a lot easier to find quickly, maybe even feature them on the front, just either there or within the library to kind of make it easier to find for you. So it has our certified employee handbook, substitute handbook, and the coaches and sponsor handbook, which will be talked about a little more in depth later on by Mr. Schott. So just sharing those with the board.
Thank you. With that, any questions, comments on those handbooks? All right, on to reports from superintendent and staff, and we'll turn it back over to Dr. Isaacson for this month's superintendent reports.
We're going to start off with a little celebration of one of our board members. Ms. Cage can go, I'm going to read something. She has completed, Ms. Stephanie Cage has a member of the Hillsborough R3 Board of Education, completed eighteen and a half hours of training required by state law. The essential new board member training sponsored by the Missouri School Boards Association combined online independent study with onsite interactive sessions and was held in Branson, Missouri on June 16th, 2023. The new board member training places a strong emphasis on improving student achievement by providing guidance to board members on effective school board leadership. Some of the topics addressed include effective board operations, including information on the role of the school board in providing oversight of the school district, important school laws, establishing school district policies, fundamentals of school finance, and protecting students from sexual assaults, and the important goal, the important role the school board plays in establishing school district goals and monitoring progress. Congratulations to Director of Operations.
Yes, more than picture, not picture.
So this is for you, there's a pen here as well. We've been told we have to get a photo.
We have to move this way just a little bit. Thank you, both of you. Thank you.
Like you know each other.
One, two, three. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks for you as well.
All right, also with the first meeting of the school year, we've had some of these individuals attending our board meetings, but now they're attending as employees of Hillsborough School District, so we're excited to have here this evening Dr. Clay LaRue, who will be, is our Senior Director of Operations, along with Mr. Jim Brooks attending, he's our Assistant Director of Transportation, Dr. Bill Murphy, our Principal at the Junior High, Mr. Billy Reese, our Assistant Principal at the High School Learning Center, and Mr. Eric Detwiler, Principal at the Elementary. Those of you that have been here a long time, we still appreciate you coming. As I was saying, I'm like, not like satellite TV, you know, like you've been a customer a long time, we're not.
Welcome to Hillsborough.
We're excited to have them with us and for this year to get started, and we have the DESI Conference this weekend, and we're all going down to get some information from DESI, but also use it as a time to connect and have a meeting. We're going to work together a lot of hours this year, and so those connections will be very important, so excited for that. Going out, our TAP grant application with the City of Hillsborough has been submitted, and now we wait for a response on that. As soon as we hear, I'll let everyone know. Five, Ridgewood update, our electrical has been completed, we've received the occupancy permit from the city, or the approval to receive it, and we just, we'll have that as soon as we pay the fee. He's going to send us the bill, and we'll get that taken care of, and then working to establish a closing date or where we're at with that with the buyers. Put some information in there on our career ladder update, we're going to have our first meeting with our career ladder committee, which is made up of teachers and some administrators to outline the year ahead and establish who the chairperson of that is going to be, coordinate all of those items as we head into the next school year. Several of our administrators attended the mental health summit, over at Festus for Jefferson County Schools and mental health professionals, and that was a good opportunity just to kind of hear of what's going on and the resources for our county and for our schools. Judge Darrell Missy, who is the Head of Children's Services, came and was kind of the keynote speaker there as well. Upcoming, wanted to let everyone know, and I think this is probably getting pushed on social media, Texas Roadhouse in Festus reached out to me and asked if we would participate in a little competition. She started the conversation by saying Josh had already agreed to it. What we have is they're going to have the week of August 14th through August 18th is when you go into the restaurant and you eat, when you leave, you can put your receipt into the Hillsborough Hawk box, DeSota Dragon box, all the schools in Jefferson County. They're going to count up to $10 of receipts in those boxes and then give 10% to the school district. So just as adding that on top. So a nice gesture by Texas Roadhouse there, that little bit before school kind of kickoff. And a reminder that the Missouri Annual Sales Tax Holiday is August 4th through the 6th. Totally pushing that information out for our parents, not just our parents, but our community members as well for technology and such. That's all I have on the superintendent report.
Straight into new look agenda item starting this month, what's in the district administration report?
Yeah, so I can introduce it. Each month, we're going to have our district administrators give reports to the board, so it's not just a few talks. So we're going to start with Ms. Hildebrand.
Great, thank you. Just a couple of things that are going on in my world. Starting this year, we're going to have two meetings a month, I'm going to have two meetings a month, strictly focusing on student achievement with our building principals. We had our first one on Tuesday, and it was very productive. We established some grading windows and some grading expectations that it consists across the board, K through 12. We also did an administrative refresher on professional learning communities, with it being our first year starting those on Wednesday, and our late ends. I shared some information with them, which they will take back to their PLC leaders in their building, and those PLC leaders will then train their group of people on our first late end, which would be the 23rd of August. So we talked about, our next meeting is going to be August the 8th, and that's going to be a focus on our MAP and our EOC results, and some things with teacher evaluations. Our MAP and our EOC results did come back earlier this week, so I'm in the process of taking all of that information and deciphering that out. I do a comparison to Jefferson County Schools as well as a comparison to last year, as well as a cohort comparison, so we're actually comparing apples to apples, fourth graders from last year to fifth graders this year, and those guys are big, so that's a big job. Jackie Reno is instrumental in helping me pull out that data, so that'll be our focus on the 8th. That information that we discuss at that meeting will then be the focus of our second PLC, our second late in, August the 30th, I believe. Yeah, teachers focus on that and beyond, so we can break that information down to pretty finite strands and specific learning standards for our kids. Let's see, if you recall, Sedex 681 was the reading initiative, so we are in the process of right now of taking that information, any, you agreed to purchase iReady, I believe it was two months ago, last month, something, that's going to be our assessment that we are using, and any student K through 3 who is significantly reading below grade level will have to be placed on a reading success plan, so I am finalizing those and working with Mr. Euler down at Technology to house all of that information at Infinite Campus, so our teachers aren't having to fill out packets and packets of paper, and it will stay with that child, so it will be beneficial to track their progress. Our federal programs application, it was due July 1st, as it is every year, so our Title 1, Title 2, and Title 4, it's a 75-page document that has to be turned in by July 1st. I did receive that back, I have to make a couple, I did make a couple minor revisions, and then we submit it, you got 45 days, but I don't have to do that, so fixed a couple things and sent it back to the DESI. We talked about our MAP and EOC data, so we just got the things going on in my world.
Ms. Kinnz with district finance.
Sure. Audit, it's year end, we just finished our year end, so I already have the auditors in this year, they were in on the 28th of June to do some preliminary interim work, do some testing, and accounts payable and in payroll, so getting a jump start on the work that we're going to need them to complete in order to have our audit finalized and board approved by the end of the calendar year. I'm still finalizing all my DESI reporting, so I can upload that. You should be seeing in your mailboxes soon those letters that you get from the auditors, the related party letters, they do have them, so they have to send them out, and you should be seeing that soon. They will be back here to do fieldwork in early September, so we're going to get that all rolling a little quicker, hopefully. The big holdup is usually the fact that we have 9:30 federal reporting that we do, and they do a lot of auditing on that, like the title programs, food service, our big money, big dollar programs, IDEA. Food Service Vendor, update on that, I talked to them today, kind of had an update call with them. They were here onsite, let's see, several weeks ago here in the boardroom, and they did enrollment, like new employee enrollment with everyone that is transitioning over to SEDEXO, and even the few people that are staying on with us, because they ordered shirts, some safety shoes, things like that. While they were here, they did an inventory in all of our kitchens, like the smallware, spoons, pans, things like that. And they also did some, a safety review while they were here, they had a gentleman in from the Chicago area that did a safety review on all of our kitchens. We also did some tours, so they could look at all the kitchens, determine how they might want to reconfigure things so that serving lines, they flowed well, they could maximize the number of kids that they get through the lines and they can do it quickly. They did get back with me today on like ordering all of our equipment, so I gave them the go-ahead to get that, those types of things done, so that we can have most of it in place by the start of school. There are a few things that are a little further out, and we, we're going to wait for that equipment, because it's going to, we don't want to just get something subpar, because we need it here by that date. So they're installing all the new marketing in the kitchens, like their program, they have like different programs based on grade level for the food, their food service program, and they're going to install that on August 8th, 9th, and 10th. So then, when everyone comes back for our back-to-school meeting on the 15th, they're going to have all this fancy new marketing, and it should look refreshed and bright. They will be catering our back-to-school breakfast, it's just going to be like a continental breakfast, so, you know, they're, the ball is rolling with them, and we're getting things accomplished in that arena. Meal prices, we're going to approve those tonight, they're going up 10 cents, that's the minimum, we have to raise it, and I'm sure everyone knows food prices and costs are at the roof right now, so that makes sense. And then I reached out to them to make sure that those pricing, that pricing was okay and good with them, and then forward on, so that's about all I have going on in my world.
Hi, Dr. LaRue, operations?
Yeah, so I have several things to touch on, but first, I want to thank board and Dr. Isaacson for the opportunity. I'm looking forward to working on a long-range plan, and then Ray and I are facilitating that and making sure that gets completed. So thank you for the opportunity. We'll hit on transportation, so the last couple of weeks, Jim and I have been working really hard on planning procedures, just making sure transportation's efficient, we're prepared for drivers' return, and then when drivers are going to be prepared for when our students return. We've been working really hard also on driver recruitment. We have 28 routes and 26 full-time drivers, we did approve one tonight to be a sub, and then hopefully we can have her, Jim can have her certified by first day of school, but we've got some other ideas as well to consolidate routes if we have to, it's not ideal, but it'll get us through until we can get some more full-time drivers. We do have a try-it-out day on the 2nd, 3rd of this month, next week, we're going to close down the high school parking lot in the section, and Jim is going to have a little course set up, and he's going to walk people through how to drive a bus, because it's a little intimidating or slightly intimidating to some people, so hopefully that, we get some people turned out for that. Is there Midwest Trains that's sponsoring it, so today they brought by several sodas and drinks and stuff, so we'll have some water and get ready for those. I think Jim's been carrying, I would like to brag him, I think he's been carrying applications around his back pocket, and handing them out in dry threes and everywhere else, so he's been working really hard on doing that. I know Dr. Isaacson and the transportation department started adding cameras to the buses, and so we had, let's see, we had three, three more added, and then we're going to, no, we had four more added this week, and we're going to have three more when our new buses come in. We have a new bus coming in at the end of August, and then we have another two new buses, they said early November with transportation, but new buses, there's always a little bit delays in my experience, so hopefully we get those this fall. Food service, Ms. Kinnz just went over food service, we've been working there a little bit, I know she's going to turn that over to me once that's been fully implemented. On the maintenance side, summers are really busy, you've got school districts, and so our custodians, the floors look really nice, if you have a chance to be in buildings, they look really good, and they're going to be finished up here by the 31st. Asphalt and paving, I said that they will be completed by the end of this week, that's close to correct. Central office will be striked this Saturday, and so it will be completed, and the ADA rate, the primary is completed as well, the data center, the data center is a little bit behind, the ground is a little bit wet for the heavy construction, the heavy equipment, so they need to wait till it's dried out, I'm sure it dried out by today, so I think they're going to start on Monday, last week we spoke with them. The roofs of the junior high elementary have been prepped, they started the junior high today, and they should be completed by the next Friday, that's the projected date they gave us. Installation has been added in the intermediate offices for efficiency, and then we did have one, so far I've learned we've had one issue this summer, we had on 7/11, ironically, on 7/11, we had an outside contractor cut into a gas line at the intermediate while working on the sprinkler system. It's been fixed and tested, it was marked incorrectly, so it was nobody in the district's fault, it was just marked incorrectly, and so when they went to cut, it was right underneath it with a sawzall, so it's been fixed and tested, and then upcoming maintenance, we've got, we're going to start prepping for grounds, making sure they look really nice for when students and parents show up on our campus. Let's see, we're going to complete, it'll be a ton of staff work orders, I'm sure when teachers start rolling back in. Pole barn behind central office, I know it's a vision that Dr. Isaacson has for concrete, and then putting in like a weld shop for sort of our ad students, and so that's, we got bids in this week, and so that's going to be carried out shortly. And then update this room, that's also on the list, we're going to put our new vision mission in for our Suffer More C-CIP, but summers are always really, really busy on the operations side. It's funny, because you get, you always get asked, Ray and I have talked about this, you always get asked, well, how's your summer going? Well, your summer's crazy, because you're making sure buildings are ready to go when staff gets here, but four weeks, it's been like treating from the water hose, and so we're getting there, but.
Thank you. District Communication, Dr. Coleman.
Okay, well, we have been very busy in this apartment. Janelle and I have been working on some new things, which we're really excited about, and I think something was leaked to you perhaps this week, so I'm pretty excited about that. I think you saw a mock-up of our cover of our publication that we're working on, so we're pretty excited. We had a photo shoot for back-to-school transportation and other miscellaneous marketing this week, we had two of them, the tunnels for transportation, and they, that turned out very cute, and really great photos, and then we had another one with Molly Vega, it was nice enough to bring her children up on what was almost the hottest day of the year to paint today's or past it, but we got some really great photos, which you saw one of. And then our website is going to get a new look, so we will be having training on that for the administration on the 18th of August at 9:00 a.m., so we're really excited about that, ready for some, you know, a fresh, clean look, and it's same company, but we're going to be doing a lot of things differently. I've actually seen it already, and it's very pretty. Janelle, it's very user-friendly, Janelle and I worked with the rep from Thrill Share and App G for a long time, we did it exactly how we want, and I think you're going to, I really think you're going to like the way it looks. So, and then we're also working with the new administration to set up their social media accounts, and then they'll be able to use the Thrill Share app, remember those words, to send news stories, but also upload to social media, which we've always been able to do, but it's an easier process now, so I'm excited about that. We are, per our strategic plan, our C-CIP, we are working on a communications plan, and that is in the draft process right now. We have some things that need to be plugged into it, but the body of the communications plan is pretty much ready to go, and I'd like to bring it to the August meeting, I'll just let you see the draft of that at that time. It will not be complete by then, but the strategic plan says we can get that finished by the end of 23, 24, but no, it'll be finished well before then. We've got a lot of it finished. The first edition of the Nets News from Hawk, from Hawk Nation is in progress now. This is a publication that will go out four times a year, and twice of those will be electronic only, so that will, our, our audience will be parents and guardians, families who have students here in the district, and then twice it will go out both electronically to them, but also a hard copy will go out, our vision is a hard copy goes out in the mail to every household and some businesses in this district. So right now, I'm seeking bids for the print, the production, and the mailing of those projects, and I'm working with some schools that have been really great in helping me and leading me on that journey. So we are working on that, and then we are excited that when the school, the new district's school community relations and grant writing coordinator joins our district, that person's going to join our communications team. And then Ms. Betsy put out a, an opening today for someone to report on activities and athletics. So with that, our game will be complete.
That's the thing.
It's a creative process.
Very much.
Our plan is to have a building or department focus each month in addition to our normal administrative reports, so this month for the summer is, Mr. Schott is going to come up and talk some items from the activities department, walk us through, give us some highlights of the handbook.
Right, so I did some revisions of the handbook, not a whole lot, just kind of additions. One for the student activities and parent handbook, I updated the motto, vision and mission of the district to coincide with the new district improvement plan for the upcoming school year. The Misha policy for semesters of eligibility, they implemented sixth grade now, it's mainly for smaller districts like a Crystal City or Grandview, who lack the number of bodies to field, say a seventh and eighth grade team in the junior high, so those schools can pull from that, I don't see us ever really having to do that, I pray to God that we never have to, but just, I just put that in the handbook to mirror what Misha's policy is on it, so it's just, it's the same language, it was already in there, but I added sixth grade as the Misha handbook did as well. And then I also added a small section about the annual parent meeting that we have. Last year, I backed it up to the last week of July, and had it all, instead of having one huge, one parent meeting every season, I had them all three together, so the fall, the winter, and the spring parents, all came to the same one, they really enjoyed that, because they have to go to specific sport meetings after that normally, so I usually speak for about 45 minutes, and then we'll break into volleyball, cheer, dance, football, all the fall sports, and those coaches will address their parents to go for sports, sports specific, sorry, sports specific things, hard to spit that out. And then the other, some of the changes I made in the coaches' and sponsors' activity handbook, also updated the mission, vision, and motto, the same as in the parent handbook. Added language to help clarify our trial card procedure and how it ties to the eligibility roster submission for Misha. When kids finish their trial packets, those of you that have kids that compete here, you understand they ought to have a physical, and then their pre-participation paperwork done. We've moved, I worked with We've moved, I worked with Doug Euler and we've moved that to electronic. That's not mandatory this year, but I think we have about 50, I think it's 55 people so far this year that have put it in through electronic. I think it's going to make things easier. Next year I'd like to implement that and make it mandatory to do everything digital because you can dump everything in a spreadsheet. You can sort it into all different types of fields that you need. But the main thing was for the coaches to understand that these trial cards, when all of that paperwork is finished, those kids will get a trial card, they turn it in the first day of tryouts or practice. And then the coach gathers those, if they don't have a card, they don't try out a practice. Then the coach will turn that into us in the activities office. We use those cards to input their eligibility roster on Misha. So that way no students fall through the cracks without a physical or without the proper paperwork. So just wanted to reiterate that to the coaches because some of the coaches can be a little lax on it saying, why do we need a trial card? We know they turned their physical in, but there may be something that they don't have. Maybe they don't have insurance, they didn't notice that or something small that could end up blowing up later. So I just wanted to add that to there as a reminder to the coaches. Also added information to help them with the description of sports-specific practice periods, open facilities and off-season conditioning. This is something that's two years in where now Misha kind of tightened the strings on open gyms, open fields, open mats. A lot of coaches, I don't think ours did, would just have their open gyms as practice period or practice times for their specific sport. So you walk into a gym and it's supposed to be a sports-specific practice period, which is seven weeks prior to their actual season starting. They can actually have three hours a week of practice time where they can be specific in teaching basketball skills and, and running it like a practice. But they're limited to three days of one hour or two days of an hour and a half. Open facilities basically is something after their season is over, they can run for seven weeks as well. And those are, you're not teaching anything. It's, it's literally an open gym. So the coach could show up, get the basketballs out, it's open play, the kids play, there's no teaching going on, no correcting. It's just they can play. Then off-season conditioning, you can do that as much as you want, as long as you don't get any balls out. So it's not sports-specific, you're not running plays, doing anything like that. It's just conditioning, kind of like our kids are doing right now. They get 20 days in the summer, all sports do. They get 20 days of sports-specific stuff in the summer, but they can also do, football goes four days a week, but usually only one of those is sports-specific. Everything else is either in the weight room or conditioning out on the field. And the last thing that I added to the coaches handbook was the recognition and celebration guidelines. The electronic version just has a link to it. They can pull it up to make sure they know what they can do, what they should do, what our parameters are. And if there's any questions, they can ask me and I can kind of guide them through that so they know what's expected of them for those postseason type of victories, which we had a lot of last year. I think a lot of our coaches are chomping at the bit to get going again this year, try to equal or outdo what we did last year. So that's pretty much all I have for you guys. Any questions? All right, thanks.
Mike, thanks for your course this evening, much appreciated. All right, we'll move on to public comment and we have any signs for public comments this evening. And we will then move on to items of board policy. We have several items that are in second, final read for approval tonight. Do I have a motion to approve the revisions to the policy changes and updates that are presented in nine dot A of C?
Motion second.
Questions or comments on this second reading? All right, hearing none. All those in favor? And not opposed, motion carries. And the approval to re-adopt policy BBFA. Do I have a motion to re-adopt policy BBFA as presented?
Motion second.
Any comments, questions?
Is there a reason it has to be re-adopted every few years? What's the reason behind that?
It's a Missouri Ethics Commission.
Well, I guess that explains everything, but that doesn't give a reason. No, I mean, MECS are a mess, I'll just say that publicly, they're a mess, but. Yeah, okay, I got you.
No questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval as presented? Not opposed, motion carries. Onto our items of consent this evening. Do I have a motion to approve all the items on the consent agenda as presented?
So move.
Any questions or anything that needs to be pulled from this list this evening?
I just have a, so the attendance report has this 20 less enrollment this year, but, or this past year, but we had an ADA that went up by so teen, is that about right? Would you know about that, Melissa?
I'm trying to find it on here.
Yeah. I, I just, that's great. I just wanted to know if that was due to any diligence on our part or?
It just happened?
I mean, yeah, it could be just random. I just, higher ADA with the declining enrollments, actually, it's surprising.
I would have to seek some clarification from Karen Ryder.
Yeah. Okay, I just was curious.
Other comments, questions?
The only thing was the financial report there. So if I'm seeing that right, is the, I mean, that's for the, since this is the end of the fiscal year, that's pretty much year-end report we're getting?
I'm still working, it's a preliminary.
Okay. But if I'm looking at that right, it would look like we came like 90% of budget or, I mean, we came under budget quite a bit, or is that right? Wow?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's about right.
That's probably, like I said, we're still working.
And the revenues were higher?
Over, higher, yes.
Other comments, questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda this evening? Not opposed, motion carries. With no unfinished business, we move to new business. Approval of bills for payment for Mrs. Oshie, the MSBA conference. Do I have a motion to approve the bills for payment for the MSBA conference for Angie Oshie?
Second.
Any questions?
They paid for mine if you guys would have cooperated.
Yes, the, 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 the payment terminal seemed to give us a move, but not Mrs. Petrie. So here we are. Any other questions here?
So what happens if we don't approve it?
Sorry, on my charge card. They got paid regardless.
That is a very true statement. All those in favor of approving this bill for payment? And any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, the next is approval for bills for payment to Mr. Lindhorst, which will be myself for the MSBA conference. Do I have a motion to approve the bills for payment for the MSBA conference for John Lindhorst?
Second.
You guys just sit and smile enough. Because I had no problem.
You were charming somebody.
All those in favor of approving this bill for payment? And opposed with one abstention, motion carries. All right, on to approval of the MSBA full policy maintenance service agreement. Do I have a motion to approve the MSBA full policy maintenance service agreement for $3,827?
Motion second.
Any questions, comments or concerns regarding this agenda item?
Well, I, I would like to ask if you, as you know, she had, we could try and get Selinda, or, right? Yeah, to look over and maybe make it more readable. What would be the cost?
I can ask you.
Okay. I, I also want to thank you for your hard work and for the board for approving that, letting them go ahead and look. That's, that was, meant something. It was nice.
So we had the, we had the new RFP for that, we couldn't just?
Well, I did, so I did an RFP for policy providers and we didn't receive any. And then I sent it out to a couple of the major providers that are not MSBA. Along that process, basically their policies, any school that has a policy retains them as a retainer or as their school attorney. So that's where they kind of, like DeSoto uses MCE, which they use MIC as a law firm. And so those are Micas policies of which their attorneys use them. So then I subsequently followed up after a couple of phone calls with Ms. Bresner and said, am I thinking that this is based on what they were telling me is if we go with them, we'd have to switch a law firm? She was typically, yes, you're going to have to, because they, that's what they work in. MSBA is more broad. And so I go, our issue is they're so broad that they're confusing and that's what's, would you be able to essentially assist us in trimming them down? She's like, absolutely. Because your, your board policies, but it's having the, their input, they're basically, I asked, I go, what do we have that ensures that the district is protected from legal? What do you need in there? And if you don't need it in there, could we take it out? Kind of that type of a reading. If it doesn't further, if it's just jargon and?
And it's so important because, and as I said, when we, these are the laws basically of this whole place. And we, we, we were in a society that operates under the assumption that no longer, we say ignorance of the law is no excuse, but it's absolutely an excuse because none of us knows all the laws in which we operate. There are just too many of them, they're too voluminous. I don't like participating in that bad trend on a local level here if we can avoid it. I mean, employees should know where they stand and what they're, you know, expected to follow. And so, yeah, it's just like our, it's not exactly a constitution, but it's very fundamental to how this place should operate. I, I appreciate lending some gravity to this because it's, to me, very important.
One question I have is, does, that our law firm's a pretty big law firm. Do they do any kind of policy maintenance?
They do. To the point that you make as far as employees reading it, that's one of the things in our handbooks, well, initially when I did those first drafts several years ago, my goal was to turn a legalist's policy into layman's terms so that an employee can understand it regardless. You don't have to have had an administration degree to be able to understand that what policy impacts, what time you clock in and such as that. I most definitely would reach out to Selinda and be like, what are we talking about as far as the cost? Just to further trim down that, because the public's going to go to our?
Well, right, yeah, and like I said, yeah, not just employees. And I'm glad we do have something to at least give them a clue. But of course it's not one for one, you know, it can't be. Every translator is a trader in some ways, but I, I'm obviously disappointed in the bucking side, you know, I was hoping for better. I, I'm also a little distressed though too, because it feels like we're captive to this market now. Like, it's almost like paying taxes every year now. We just pay, approve three, well, almost $4,000 and hope we get what our money's worth because they can do whatever they want and we still have to have them, kind of thing. You know, I, I wonder if there's an alternative anywhere. I mean, obviously alternative is we don't have to have a service provider, that creates a headache. But I, I'm wondering if there's some other alternative, so I, I don't know. I just, this was unexpected to me when I saw it, so I haven't had a lot of time to think about it. But I'd like to, I'll think on it and maybe ask some questions, see if we can at least have an idea of some competition here or something that we're not just forced, you know, so.
All the other lawyers, the competition?
Well, one would hope, right?
I mean, we could change, you know, all of that type of thing.
We could maybe, I, I don't know.
Because I was surprised with that information. I mean, you know, doing that process, I learned that after, you know, all these, all these years, you got to do it.
I mean, you know, even if in the end you guys do want to go with the MSBA, at least we had a choice. You know, right, like I said, right now I feel like it's a one-party system. Anyway, that's.
MSBA is the most broad, I guess that's the, they're the broad policy provider.
Well, heck, they're even named in state statute, they've gotten that.
Any other questions or comments on this side? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the policy maintenance? And any opposed? Motion carries. Onto the approval of the city of Hillsborough SRO contract. Do I have a motion to approve the school resource officer agreement with the Hillsborough Police Department to provide two school resource officers from July 1st, 2023 until June 20th, 2024?
Motion second.
Comments or questions on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of this contract? Motion carries. On to the approval of a reclassification of exempt classified positions as exempt professional positions. Do I have a motion to reclassify the exempt classified positions as exempt professional positions as presented?
Motion second.
Any questions or comments on this agenda item? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of this change as presented? Not opposed, motion carries. On to the approval of the 2023, 2024 school lunch prices. Do I have a motion to approve the 10 cent increase for breakfast and lunch for the 2023, 2024 school?
Second.
Any questions on lunch price changes this evening?
My only question is what can we expect the next year? I mean, if inflation keeps up the way it is, food inflation's around 10%.
You have to increase it a minimum of 10 cents, like per their calculation. Like it's a higher number, but.
Is it, is it based off of, is it based off of food inflation or is it just generally like every year or what?
I am not real clear on that. Kim Jackson did this before she retired. I sent it to Sedexo to look over and I was on the phone with Desi trying to understand it, it's complicated.
Okay.
I'm trying to understand it a little bit better, but it takes into account the increase in food prices.
Yeah. Is it other stuff to other factors then? Maybe?
I'm doing my best to learn some of these things.
Before next year, maybe if we could find out, because I just want to know, you know, what's, what's on the road.
Absolutely. Do you know?
So there's usually a metric set by Desi on the amount of what food prices should be. And as long as your school district is increasing the minimum of 10 cents, you show that you're trying to reach those prices.
Ah, and how far below then are we what they say it should? Is that the reason?
We trued up last year, if you remember, when after lunches were free and then we went back to charging, we went up the full amount that it recommended on the calculator. So we thought, cool, we're good. Yeah, we.
Apparently not.
No, I mean, I, I can't remember the exact number we needed to increase, but we did the minimum. Because we want to see how this new program is.
Right, and I guess my other, the reason I'm asking is because parents are going to want to know and ask, right? What they can expect, right? So they can plan, I think that'd be only fair.
Like for the subsequent years?
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, I think in the past it typically, we do 10 cents, 10 cents.
And it's just going to be that for the end of time, basically?
Yeah, but that will play a factor into.
Do parents know that then? It's just going to be 10 cents for?
No, every year the board has to approve that cost.
Right.
But I think it will just depend on factors such as food costs, because that affects how your program runs as a whole.
Right.
And what we will get back, earn, you know, to put back into the program.
Right. But you see where I'm going, I just, as long as we can get some good forecasting, I think that'd be only fair to put that.
Yeah, we can definitely try to do that.
Okay.
I'm going to have our new vendor help me with that.
Yeah, that'd be nice. But we're, they're not a public service, we are.
Other questions this evening? Comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the approval of the lunch prices for the coming year? Not opposed, motion carries. And onto our last item of new business, the approval of a primary success room aide slash interventionist position for the coming year. Do I have a motion to approve the primary success, success room aide position?
Motion second.
Motion, second. Third, fourth. Seventh.
All right, any discussion or information items? Now, this is a new position we are creating, so.
Yes, Dr. Freeman and Mrs. Phelps did a lot of research, and there's some other schools in our areas that are having some of the same difficulties in terms of social-emotional behavior type items, and had decided to go ahead and start a room, which we will dedicate one teacher to, will have smaller, smaller number of students in there, some of our little guys who need some more of that social-emotional behavior support, and this will be placing aid with that teacher.
So has this been done before, is this a new thing we're trying?
This, the, the classroom is new to us, yes, but we have, they have visited other places where this has been done before.
Okay, so, and my thing is, is this gonna be on a trial basis, like, this isn't working, or is there some way we can tweak it if it isn't, or?
For sure, we will always, yes, we will definitely evaluate, yes.
So are the students moving in and out throughout the school year, or are they like a regular classroom?
It's gonna be a fluid, depending on their needs, yes.
Okay, that's right.
No, I think this is a great transitional tool for us.
Yes, Kathy had talked with her staff, and they all agreed, so we had a first-grade teacher volunteer who's been doing a lot of work over the summertime to get ready for this classroom, and our first-grade numbers began to grow, so we asked a kindergarten teacher to move to first grade, and we did get a volunteer on that, so our class sizes were a little bit more.
Good. Other questions? All those in favor of approving the success room aide position? Not opposed, motion carries. We do have a little bit of, of work to be done in executive session, so I'm going to just minute here, ask for a motion to recess into executive in accordance with revised Missouri statute six one zero dot zero two one, as agenda items relate to the following: hiring, firing, disciplining, or promotion of employees, individually identifiable personnel records, and the approval of executive minutes and/or real estate, do I have a motion to recess into executive session here at seven fifty-three?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor of recessing to executive session? All right, well, that will end tonight's open session, we're now going to recess for just a few minutes.